I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 19th, 2018 Bryan City Council meeting. First on the minutes tonight, or on the agenda tonight, we need to approve the minutes from the February 5th, 2018 meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next is the clerk treasures report, Lori.
The council's been presented with the clerk treasures report at the month ending January 31st, 2018.
Counsel?
So moved.
I'll second.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is any hearing of public concerns. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next is an ordinance. We're gonna turn this over to the mayor.
Actually Lori, could you number and read first, please?
Ordinance number six, 2018, a ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Quest Diagnostics Clinical Laboratories Incorporated, beginning February 15th, 2018, for pre-employment and random DOT drug and alcohol screening services.
This contract is in partnership with our new agreement with Activate Clinic. As most of you know, we joined Activate January 1st. Our employees have been utilizing that clinic, but there was a separate contract that needed signed for the lab work that was brought to our attention last week. So we are asking for you to approve that contract and let me sign it so that we can get our DOT and screenings done through Activate and completed that way.
Moved to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to approve.
A second.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Okay, next is an employee status change in the street department, Mr. Engstrom.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you wanna do both of them at once, or one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay, the first one is Jose Vasquez. He came off probation July 17th, 2017, and there was an error on that paper, and this is just to correct that error. He's not getting reclassified, it's just to get the paperwork corrected. And then the second one is Kevin Temple. And I'm asking that Kevin be reclassified to equipment operator three slash supervisor, which Kevin has acted for the few years now as a supervisor out on the job site when Tim and I aren't around. And this is just to get his classification to match the duties that he's been doing.
At the same rate?
At the same rate.
How moved do we approve?
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a building permit, Mr. Watterson.
Good evening. Tonight I have a permit for Mommy Valley Guidance Center. This is for 910 East Maple Street. They will be moving into the old Black Box building. Field Construction will be doing the work. State construction type is 2B, state use group is B. Cost for the project is $59,749. This is a 1,345-foot interior renovation. Upgraded some things in the lunchroom, mechanical room, adding a hallway. Very, very minor stuff.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is your annual reports for planning and zoning in Parks and Rec.
You got this slide on the...
I think I'm sorry. Sheriff's counsel.
Uh, no, you're in. It should be...
Are you hooking, or am I? Okay. What am I doing?
Up a little bit from beginning.
Does that want to?
Does this work?
His might take it. Are you in control?
Alright, I got it.
I'm not in control. That's why it won't work.
Easy.
Yeah, you're moving my mouse.
Okay.
Why do you?
Touchy.
It is.
Okay, hit it.
No. Put it X off the...
There you go. Alright.
Boom!
Tonight I'll be doing the 2017 work permits and zoning certificates report, along with some violation information later. In 2017, I issued 154 permits. This was up from the previous year by quite a margin. Hopefully, we can keep this trend going. Let me get out of that.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry. What is going on?
Don't.
Don't? Were you saying don't to me, Mr. Dominic?
I'll stop and then...
I don't feel like I'm in control of my laptop this evening. If you don't just hit the arrow.
I don't know if this'll work.
Should just be able to hit the arrow over.
Okay.
Can you? Over or down, or take the slider, do you see the slider here? Yeah, I can do that. There you go. There, that's your page.
Okay.
I promise. Don't click, I'll click.
Okay, those 154 permits, I brought in $19,061.80. As you can see from this slide, that is also up from the previous years. Again, would really like to continue this trend. Go to the next one, Carrie. This slide is our construction trends. This would be the residential and commercial costs, construction costs reported throughout the year. For a commercial, I had a cost of $4,768,340. As you can see in the slide, quite a bit increased from the previous year. There was one new commercial industry this year, or commercial business this year, community health professionals on South Portland Street. There were four additions, the YMCA, Ny-Hart Storage Building, the main stop on West High Street, and powertrain components. There were five renovations, New Era Ohio, Selkirk International, Spangler's Candy, the Walmart Plaza, Key Mansfield Building here on the corner of Union Street, which is Edward Jones Investments moved in there. For construction costs, brought in, or reported $1,657,153. As you can see, this is also up from last year. There were six new homes built in Bryan on 2017. Two in Greenfield, one in Greystone, one in Autumn Chase, and a Habitat House on South Williams, and the house that's under construction on Center Street. There's also a seventh, but it got mixed up in the paperwork and got issued January, first week in January this year. That is in Wellington's new addition, the Point at Greenfield. This one describes the type of construction, they were all single-family houses this year, no duplexes or triplexes. Triplexes are gonna be extremely rare, because you have to get a use variance for those, but... Next slide, Carrie. Next, I'll move into zoning certificates, issued nine of those in 2017. Again, this is up from the previous year. Hopefully, we can keep this trend going as well. Next one. From those nine certificates, I brought in $800. Would like to see that figure continue to rise, but we'll see what we can do this year. Out of those zoning certificates, there was one final plat approval, that was for the Point at Greenfield. There were five variances. For use variances, we had the Williams County Land Bank for the community gardens on North Williams Street. And we approved a dog grooming to go in on South Union Street. For size variances, we had Tagged Earhart apply for an accessory building. The planning commission denied that because it exceeded the, well exceeded the ground floor area of the house. That would've been on East Trevon Street across from Matty Marsh Park. Setback variances, we had two. One was for Burger Dairy, their accessory building along the alley. That two was denied due to utilities and too close to the alley. And the Ice House applied for a variance to add coolers on the back of their building. Planning commission approved that one, and hopefully that'll get started this spring. And I also issued three lot splits throughout the city in 2017. Next, we'll move on to violations. In 2017, I issued 99, or dealt with 99 complaints. As you can see there, those are the numbers, six for trash or vehicle that were turned over to the police department, 49 with grass and weeds, 16 for building violations, 13 were construction without a permit, six were for swimming pool violations, three fence, two camper, two for visibility issues along the corner, trimmed the trees up or hedges, or they were parking something there that was blocking visibility, so got those taken care of. One for signage, and one for a use variance. Out of the grass and weeds, 34 of them were posted, sent 10 letters. Letters usually get sent out, because there's confusion. They'll mow three-quarters of the yard, but leave a strip along the alley or something, or they just kinda ignore it, so I gotta kinda explain it to them, what we're looking for. Five verbals, those usually get dealt with right away. Out of those 49, five complaints were turned over to the city attorney. Six complaints, these are foreclosures or vacant structures. City engineering takes care of those, hires a mode, keeps an eye on them. That was at a cost of $660 in 2017. Building violations, issued 10 of those. Four of them were for roof repair. Two of them complied. Two of them are pending. One was sent to the city attorney. That one has since changed ownership, so we're keeping an eye on that, make sure that gets taken care of. Issued four for exterior walls. Two of those complied, and two are still pending, and those also changed ownership. So come this spring, I will be getting them on notice and see if we can get those remedied. One was for a deteriorated building that was demolished, and one was for a vacant structure on South Gardner Street, and that was also demolished. Down there in the corner, I did issue six written warning letters for surface coating, houses that need painted or sited. Just put them on notice that they need to start thinking about saving some money back, so they're gonna have to put some money in their home. So out of those six warning letters, not one of them did anything in 2017. So we'll continue to monitor in 2018, see where they're at. Which brings us to 2018. Late last year, I drove around, started making a list. Out of that list, I have 41 warning letters that will hopefully be going out this week for surface coating and/or roofing. Again, not a violation, just putting them on notice, you need to think about putting some money into your house. So we'll continue to monitor those throughout the year, and if it gets bad enough, and when it's warranted, we'll put them on notice for the 90 days, force them to do something. Out of that list, I had six building violations that I will address in the spring. Those will be 90 days to get remedied. And also on that list, I had 18 minor violations that I will also address in the spring. These would include hanging downspouts, gutter, soffit, things of that nature, real minor. Plan on giving them to July 1st to get those minor violations taken care of.
When you say building violations, what, how are you talking about?
Hole in the wall, hole in the roof, leaning shed, accessory building, it varies.
So it's a structural issue?
Yes, yes. Hole in the foundation, those are coming in on the pop door. Chimney about ready to fall down, had a couple of those, so...
So... So in 2017, is it comparable between the two in terms of the numbers? In 2017, you issued 10, and in 2018, you will be issuing 41? Is it, or are those different entities, are those different categories?
In 2017, I issued six warning letters. In 2018, I'm gonna be issuing 41.
And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We've had more of a reactive approach, we're trying to get more proactive.
Oh, I liked the sound of that.
So...
No, thank you.
We're gonna be out on...
No, I do, I like the sound of that. Thanks, thanks.
You usually get a pretty good response when you send a letter like that? Or do you have to do a lot of follow-up?
It varies. The ones last year, most of them were foreclosed homes. So now that they changed ownership, I can actually get ahold of somebody instead of sending it to a bank four states away that don't care. The land bank's really helping out, getting some of these properties cleared up, so...
If you don't know this, it's fine, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just more curious than anything. Of these violations of these residential homes, are the vast majority of them, the people that are living there own the home, or are they rentals?
Well, in 2017, most of them were vacant. Now, on the 2018 list, it's, I'm gonna say probably 70/30.
Okay.
70 homeownership, 30 rentals.
Sure, thank you.
Which the ones that do qualify, I do plan on putting a chip flyer in to see if they can assist with improvements, depending on financial status, so... Any questions? No, so I had...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Mr. Dominic.
I have no idea what's going on with the mouse. Let me know if I need to click for you.
Okay, good evening. In front of you, you should have a copy of our 2017 Bryan Parks and Recreation Department annual report. And in the annual report, you'll also find a little report about the tree commission, so you have opportunity to look through that. I encourage you, as you have some time, to go through the report. If you have questions, concerns, issues, please feel free to call me at any time to discuss the report, I'd be happy to go over it with you. This evening's PowerPoint presentation is just a quick synopsis of what you have in front of you. Again, if you have questions, don't hesitate. First of all, our staff, 2017 staff, Bruce Wheeler is my assistant, Cindy Rao is really who runs the department, she is terrific. Cora Gosia is our horticulturist, arborist, Greg Hartman, park maintenance, Tony Scanlon, park maintenance, Brandon Sullivan is new to our park maintenance department, Holly Gambler, still our preschool teacher. And then through May of last year, Darby Davis was also a preschool teacher. She left us in May, and we chose not to fill that position with a full-time employee, we're filling it with two part-time people. So it helps a little bit with the overhead. I really have a terrific staff, I can't say that enough. My part-time staff isn't up there, but they're just as important as our full-time guys. But those people take great pride in what we have here, and we wouldn't have what we have here without those people. So I wanna make sure you guys know that. Real quickly, I know on the board, it's really hard to read, but you guys have the ability to have it in front of you. It is my park board. Park board is technically an advisory board that helps Bruce and I kinda keep the parks moving in a direction that we see fit. They take on a lot of the odds and ends, questions, can we do signage, can we do this, can we do that? Park board kinda filters all that stuff through, so you don't always have to deal with every single question that comes up through the parks department. If it gets through the park board and gets through our department, then obviously it comes to you, and we move forward with whatever project that may be. A lot of times, we spend at the park board level making recommendations to the council as to what we think is fit moving forward for the grand plan in the parks. I have five park board members, Renee Isaac, Tammy Bergman, Emily Ebaugh, Paula Klein, and Kelly Voight. I also have two ad hoc members, Kevin Rao and Dave Batt. They all spend an incredible amount of time taking care of the parks, helping us take care of the parks, helping us look into the future, and planning for the parks. So I definitely wanna thank those people also. As I mentioned before, the tree commission also falls underneath of me. My tree commission members are Phil Fix, Charlie Wolf, Paula Klein, Valinda Lemmons, Helene Moog, and Cora Gosia. Since we've done this in 2018, you'll see that Charlie Wolf will leave our tree commission. He's gonna be an ad hoc member, he's gonna stick with us as much as he can, but it's just hard for him to get to meetings and stuff, so we've replaced Charlie, and next year, I'll introduce you to the new person and all that kinda good stuff. Again, these people take care of our trees. They're the ones fighting to make sure the trees aren't being taken down unless they need to be taken down. They're very active with the schools around Arbor Day, they do the program to make sure the kids try to get some idea of the importance of trees moving forward. The urban forest is extremely important to us, and if these people don't fight for the urban forest, nobody will. So I'm very appreciative that they do that for me. Quickly, over the course of the year, and again, I wanna, I wanna stress that a lot of these numbers are estimates. We do our best to come up with accurate numbers, but they aren't always 100% accurate. So we do our best. We came up with roughly 157,000 users last year. What I do then is I break that apart for you into our different buildings, shelters, pools, East End, the community room, school gyms we still use, McDonald Rough Ice Arena, and we try to break it all apart, so you can kinda see where our usage is at. We're pretty balanced as to what we use. The ice rink is still a big one, school gyms is still there, our pools is still a big one. Other activities outside of facilities is a huge one. Baseball games, softball games, soccer events, tennis, all that kinda fun stuff falls into the other activities. The next slide that I have there shows you our five-year. It shows each of the five years, and then it also shows you a five-year average. As you can see, from about 2014 to 2017, we are pretty flat. It did go down a little bit this past year, but we're still above the five-year average. So that kinda gives you an idea as far as how the parks are being used. The next slide I have there is specifically for our shelters and pavilions. Again, they're used for reunions, birthday parties, you know, special groups, community events, reunions, all that good stuff. We estimate we had about 23,000 users throughout our different facilities. Our facilities include East End, Garver, HIT, JC Pavilion, Matty Marsh, Moore, Roseland, and then we lumped together pavilions one, two, and three located in Rec Park, in Moore Woods. So that kinda gives you a little bit of idea there. As you can see from the chart, JC Pavilion is still a huge user group. Moore Shelter, to say that it's only used during the summer months, is a huge group. And then the pavilions in the woods get used an awful lot also. Again, in front of you, we've listed our five-year average, and then also each of the five years. As you can see, things stay pretty consistent. We are down a little bit, but still above the five-year average, about 23,000, the average is about 21,000. So we're still in pretty good shape. The next slide I have there for you is our pool usage. In the year 2017, we had roughly 21,000 pool users. We count pool passes, public swim, lessons, rentals, swim team practices, swim team meets. And then we also do some aerobics and things like that, so that's all accounted for in there. As you can see, 79% of our usage is Moore Pool, which shouldn't surprise you. At Moore Pool is where we do all of our lessons, all of the swim team, all of the swim meets. So it gets more usage, that's just the nature of it. East End has done pretty well since we've gone to the alternate schedule, so things are better at East End. But Moore is still the more popular of the two pools. Again, I do the sheet that gives you each of the last five years. We are down a little bit at the pools. Last year, we were around 20, you know, 23,000, this year, we're at about 21. So it's down a little bit, not sure why that is. But, and we're a little bit below our five-year average. The thing I would caution you is, is that in 2014, we hosted the conference swim meet. So if you're familiar with the conference swim meet, that's roughly 5,000 people at our pool in a weekend. So sometimes that skews our five-year average a little bit. If you were to take 2014 and take the swim meet out, you know, for the last five years, we've been pretty consistent with where our numbers located. It's just a little off because of that one year. Which also means we probably should be coming up for conference again, we haven't had it in three years, so... That means maybe this year or the following year, we should see conference swim meet here again, so... I'm not gonna go through the next slide word for word, but what I like to do is, is at least give you a list of some of our major accomplishments through the year. And you'll go through and read some of them and, and be like, yeah, I know, you mow, we know that. We just kind of go through and put it all down on paper. Obviously, one of our big ones was the Soccer Light Project. That was a huge one for us this past year. We always do Barn Fest and the Halloween Party, so you'll see those in there. But we just kind of give you an idea of, of what we do on a, on a daily basis, a yearly basis, a monthly basis, kind of all fits into the sheet right here. So that's important for us to show you. And then the last one that I have there for you, again on the slide, I know it's really small. Thankfully, in front of you, it's a little bit bigger, so it's easier to read. I try to put the donations out there. This past year, the parks took in almost two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in donation. Now, a hundred and ninety-four thousand of that was the Soccer Lights. So that was a large chunk of that, that donation. But as you can see, we, a lot of our projects that we do through the course of the year do have some funding that go with them. And the larger the project, obviously, the more funding there is. So I like to put that in front of you. The other one I wanted to draw your attention to on there was, we list Bryan Municipal Utilities every year, gives us money for trees. That's listed there. Rosa Isaac accounts through the Bryan Area Foundation. We have two of those that we get annually from Bryan Area Foundation. Those donations are listed on there. We have a concession stand, Bryan Baseball Association concession stand. That one's listed on there. So it kind of shows you where, where the money comes and kind of goes back a little bit when we put it back into the projects and so on and so forth. So, that's what I have. Again, it's a, it's a brief synopsis of what you have in front of you. But I would answer any questions, or try to answer any questions you might have.
Ben, how many, how many people do you look to hire in the summer for, to help you with the mowing?
Yeah, okay, so when we get to full staff, we're anywhere from thirty to forty people. Now, what you gotta keep in mind is, is a lot of that is dependent on the pools. The last couple of years, our numbers have been a little lower because what we've done is we've split our pool operations. And on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, we open Moore Pool. And on Tuesday, Thursday, Sunday, we open East End Pool. So the number of guards that we need to fully operate during the day goes from ten to twelve to operate both pools, down to five on a given day. So the number of kids that we're hiring is a little bit lower. So the last couple of years, we've been right around twenty-five, thirty people, seasonal. I'll have guys that will start as early as the first week in April, and we'll work through about Thanksgiving. The last couple of years, it's been really super nice at Thanksgiving. We hated to leave them at Thanksgiving because there's still leaves and that kind of stuff to work on. But that's, that's kind of the way, that's kind of the way our seasonal works. Our college kids, obviously, will show up in May, and then our pool employees will show up in June. The pools will be a little bit different animal this year because school is going later and school's starting earlier. So when they all go back to school, we lose our lifeguards. And that, that's, that's something we're really gonna have to take a long, hard look at as we get closer to summer and try to figure out how we want to handle that.
Council is going to be going into executive session, but before we do that, I'd like, just like to go around the room. Do you have anything else, Mr. Waterston? Chief Wallace?
Yeah, I would like to echo that. My both reports, very informative, very helpful. Bryan's Parks and Rec, pretty much throughout my life, have been the, have been a gem of Bryan, and they continue to be that way. So thank you for that, for you and your staff. Andy, I appreciate your position, being more proactive, so we can keep it that way. That's a good thing. Thank you, both of you.
I just want to thank you guys for the reports. They were excellent. Thank you for what you do. Rick?
Same here. I just hope I'm not one of the forty-one letters that are going.
You are not.
That's good.
Do I have the updates?
But I just want to echo what they were. You guys do a fantastic job, and, you know, our parks are, are some of the best that I've ever seen. And, you know, Andy, the job that you do, especially going out and having to deal with some of the people that are out there, that's a tough job, and you need to be commended for that, so, thank you.
Lori? Rhonda? Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to echo everything that council says. It's obviously going on my second month of mayor, and Mr. Waterston and I had a conversation about our zoning laws and the enforcement and also the CHIP program, and it wasn't a very long conversation, and he did everything that I asked, and I didn't even realize he was doing it, so I'd just like to commend the professionalism of our department heads, our planning and zoning. Lori and Rhonda have been a great help to me, and I, I just really look forward to the direction we're taking the city with your help as council members. With that being said, next week for part of the week, I get to go to Washington DC and represent Bryan at the OMEA conference with Mr. Maynard and a few others from VMU. I'm really excited to do that and hope I represent Bryan well, and I'd like to thank Ms. Harris in advance because she will be the acting mayor for a few events.
Don't have a rec.
Were you quite trying to kill me? I will try careful. No problems.
I don't mind stepping in, but I don't want it permanent.
Thank you for your reports tonight, gentlemen. They were very well done.
I would like to ditto everything that was said up here tonight. I'm sure, Andy, you get some really hostile feedback from when you send out some of those letters, so I don't envy you your job at all. Ben, there are parks in this city that are top-notch compared to nothing. I mean, we just, we just excel so much in this city with our Parks Department. So thank you all. You do a wonderful job, all of you do. We will now go into executive session for the pen, for pending litigation, and... I think that's it, isn't it? Yeah, we'll take a brief recess. Thank you very much.
You don't have to do that tonight.